The City Council meeting of November 12, 2025 is hereby called to order at 6:00 p.m. The invocation will be led by the city clerk.
Please bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, we pray that you guide us always and satisfy the needs that need to be met during this meeting. Please provide strength to the council as it makes tough decisions. Help us work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask this in your loving name. Amen.
Amen. Is there anyone here who is a military veteran or currently serving in the military? Please stand or raise your hand so that we may recognize you. Will please rise for the flag salute. Will the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Councilmember Farfan?
Here.
Councilmember Roa?
Here.
Mayor Protem Del Rio?
Here.
Mayor DePaola?
Here.
We have the quorum.
Councilmember Vargas has asked to be excused for tonight's meeting. Will the city clerk please provide brief information relating to public comments?
A member of the public may submit a public comment via written correspondence or by submitting an e-comment through the city's website. Another way to participate is through our Zoom option. The Zoom meeting ID and passcode are in the agenda packet. In-person public comments are also welcome at the city council chamber. Public comment is now open.
Am I on? Yes. Mr. Mayor, City Council, Ernesto Marquez, there was a misunderstanding or a very big mix-up when it came to the veterans' service. I got a call two weeks ago from Commander Mike, and he asked if I would participate in it with a prayer. And I said, "I'd love to. I'd be honored to pray for the veterans." And he says, "Okay, well, I'm going to submit your name to the person in charge, and he's going to get back to you to confirm it." Well, no one got back to me. And on that day, I did Frank Gexiola's funeral at my church, but I could have came here after the funeral, but no one got ahold of me. But I heard because three ladies called my wife saying, "Is Hank okay? Is he sick or something?" And she said, "No, he's fine. Why is that?" And they said, "Because at the veterans' service, they got up at the end saying Pastor Hank's going to close in prayer, so Pastor Hank, please come up." And then they looked around, and they said, "Pastor Hank, please come up," but Pastor Hank was never invited. Then they said, "Well, I guess he's a no-show." But I just wanted to tell the community, wherever the cameras at, that I was not a no-show. I would have been honored to pray for these men that sacrificed, these women that sacrificed their lives for us and came back. I would have been honored to do that. It wasn't a mix-up on my part. I just never got the call to come. And so I'm just here to say to the veterans that I'm sorry there was a mix-up, and I'm sorry if you got the impression that I was a no-show, because I'm not. I'm there for you, because my son is a veteran, 11 years a Marine. So I love them guys. I love them women. There's just something about their hearts that aren't afraid to die for others, and that's what fires me up. And that's why I'm here to just clarify that I did not be a no-show. So I just want to clarify that, and thank you very much. And I tried to get ahold of Mike McLaughlin, who invited me two weeks ago if I wanted to come, and told me that the city would get ahold of me to confirm. I tried to call him and let him know there was a mix-up. I never got a confirmation or never got a call. So thank you for letting me have my time, and God bless Hawaiian Gardens. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor Hank, and thank you also for the service of your son. We appreciate it.
Good evening, council. My name is Richard, a lifelong resident. I just wanted to come up here and say a couple of things. I wish there was like better things to say, and you guys all know me. There's a couple of things that last year, it's regarding sports. We were entered in a tournament, and this year it seems like we're not going to get the opportunity. The kids that I coach and the kids in the program are not going to get the opportunity to play in the tournament again. And the part that's upsetting is that I told the staff that I would pay the fee out of my own pocket, and they never got back to me. Seems like they're busy doing other stuff. I'm a little bummed about that, and I asked to talk with them, the people that were running the program, and it's just not happening. I've been volunteering 20-plus years, and I think the kids deserve to go to the tournament. And I even reached out to them and told them that even if I'm not the head coach or the coach in charge, as long as the kids, not just my kids that I coach, the kids in the program, as long as they get a chance to go to that tournament and represent Hawaiian Gardens like we did last year. And like I tell everyone that knows me, that Hawaiian Gardens has so much talent. And then when we get a chance to shine, we do shine, but it seems like we're not going to get that chance this year. And the other thing I want to talk about is the kids that I coach right now, most of them are in seventh and eighth grade. And after the football season ends in a couple of weeks, it seems like there's no other sports that's going to continue, like basketball, volleyball, this something, track, stuff like that that I think the city needs to invest in. We got great athletes. And so that's the frustrating part, is I wish the city would invest more in the middle school sports. That's about it. If anyone ever wants to reach out to me, they let me know. I volunteer so much time, and it bums me out, you know. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard, and thank you for your volunteer work.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Susuz Mendosa. I live at 22022 St. Avenue. First, I just want to agree with Richard. You know, I think there's a lot of emphasis on, for us, when we first started working, especially when I first started working in recreation, in order to feed into our schools, in order to make our junior high and high school a lot more competitive to these other schools that have a lot more to offer. But we have the talent. We just need to invest more on it. And what he's asking, I don't think it's a lot. Hopefully, you guys can consider that, especially at junior high level. We always do great from three to, you know, all the way to sixth grade, from three-year-olds all the way to sixth grade, which is 11 or 12-year-olds. But after that, at junior high level, we seem to decrease. And I think that's what feeds into the high school in order for them to have a little bit more chances for scholarships and the sport and so forth. And I think as long as we're maintaining their grades, it'll be good. The reason why I want to come up here is, you know, I want to just give personal thanks for, I know you guys are going to recognize the recent retirees, which is, you know, Kathy Webb, Jesus Contreras, Frank Amaro, and Santos Murgia. I worked with them for so many years, and I think that it's very vital how much time and effort, their spouses and their whole families, how much they put into the city. And it's obviously very comforting to see that you guys are going to recognize them and you guys acknowledge them on paper, because it's, like I said, some of them gave more than half of their lifetime. And it goes to show the employees here really care for the city. They're not just here as a stepping stone. They're not here, they invest as much as you guys invest. And I think that hopefully this simple recognition goes a long way with other employees in order for them to be able to say, "That's what I want. That's where I want to be. That's what I want to do." It's been a little bit more than a year, it's going to be two years since I retired. I was just telling Santos right now. I still can't get used to it. So I tell him it takes a long time, because after 35, 36 years, it takes a long time to get used to it. The extra time, I'm trying to do as much as I can. And hopefully, I just want to wish all of them the best, and I appreciate you guys recognizing them. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Susuz.
Do you have one member of the public on Zoom? Andrew Hard. You may unmute and provide your public comment.
Thank you, Pablo. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is Andrew Hard with Surf City Boats, DBA Freedom Boat Club. You may recall that council considered the appeal of the minor use permit for my boat sales operation at 12347 East Carson Street. As you know, the council will take up the item again on December 10th. I'd like to take a moment now to address several statements made by planning department staff during council's consideration of the appeal that are simply not true and need to be corrected. First, staff claim my business doesn't have regular hours of operation. That is false. Our hours are 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. by appointment with our sales executive, exactly as stated in our original application before I purchased the property. This was fully disclosed and accepted by the planning department, and I have the documentation to provide it. Using that now as a reason for denial is not valid. We also cannot have an open yard for public safety reasons. Second, staff said no goods or services would be provided to the community. That is both wrong and offensive. Boats are not decorative objects. They allow local residents to enjoy the water, create memories, support local marinas, and stimulate nearby businesses. Third, staff said the council must determine whether this is boat sales or boat storage. I've made it clear many times that Surf City Boats is a boat sales business. Our Freedom Boat Club model buys new boats, operates them for three years, then reconditions and sells them. Boat sales are central to our business, not an afterthought. Councilmember Roa mentioned he saw online that Surf City Boats is a rental company. That's a misunderstanding. There's another local rental business with a similar name, but that isn't us. Surf City Boats, Inc. is our corporate entity, and we do business as, DBA, Doing Business As, Freedom Boat Club, a boating membership program. We do not rent boats to the general public. Members pay an initiation fee and monthly dues for access to our fleet. The planning department also argue that our use is inconsistent with the general plan. That is false. The property's general commercial designation allows a wide range of commercial uses, including boat sales, as my attorney made clear. Finally, now that the city has had time to review the information from the last meeting, what steps will be taken to address the allegations of selective enforcement and retaliation raised by a former city employee? What will the city do to investigate the fabricated state boat sales license requirement that doesn't exist? And what can I and the Hawaiian Gardens community, and when can I and the Hawaiian Gardens community expect accountability from those responsible? I'd like to ask the council to take action to address these serious concerns and restore integrity to this process. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
There are no additional speakers on Zoom, Mayor.
Next item, proclamation and certificates. Tonight, we are recognizing our recent retirees, Catherine Webb, Jesus Contreras, Frank Amaro, and Santos Murgia. I would like to ask my council colleagues to please step down so we could give their lack of appreciation. We're moving up to the next item, agenda organization. This is time for the city council to discuss any changes in the order of the agenda. Would any council member like to make any changes to the agenda? We would like to take a five-minute recess, just to spend time with them. Okay? Yeah, we convene from recess at 6:39 PM. Next item, Agenda Organization. This is a time for the City Council to discuss any changes in the order of the agenda items. Would any council member like to make any changes in the agenda?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Farfan?
Yes.
Councilmember Roa? Mayor Pro Tem Del Rio?
Yes.
Mayor DePaula?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, Public Hearing. Recommendation to hold public hearing and conduct a second reading by title only or of ordinance number 2025-621, amending Title 15 of the Hawaiian Gardens Municipal Code, adopting by reference the 2025 California Building Electrical, Mechanical, Plumbing, and Residential Codes. Is there a staff report?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight we'll be adopting a new building code for January 1st. And I have Dennis and Nicholas Tarango here. Dennis will be making some comments about the change to the building standards.
Thank you, Lise. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's agenda item is the second reading and the public hearing for an ordinance to amend Title 15 of the city's municipal code, in order to adopt by reference Title 24, the 2025 California Building Standards Codes. This item has been introduced for the first reading on October 22nd, 2025 council meeting. And a second reading and a public hearing was scheduled for tonight's council meeting. The Building Standards Commission updates the statewide construction codes every three years. These updates are intended to improve safety, sustainability, and overall building performance across the state. Local jurisdictions are permitted to make amendments to the state codes provided findings are made, and the findings are topographical, geographic, or climatic. With this ordinance, staff is recommending the city adopt the 2025 Building Standards Codes along with specific amendments that are necessary to protect health, safety, and welfare of our community. This evening, we respectfully request the council to conduct the public hearing, read by title only, waive further reading of the ordinance, and adopt ordinance number 2025-621. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion from a council colleague? I'd like to open the public hearing for public comment.
Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to provide any public comments on this hearing item? Please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, Mayor.
There being no comments, the public hearing is now closed. Would the city clerk please read the title of the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawaiian Gardens, amending Title 15 of the Hawaiian Gardens Municipal Code by repealing Title 15, chapters 15.4, 15.6, 15.8, 15.10, 15.12, 15.14, and adding in lieu thereof new chapters 15.4, 15.6, 15.8, 15.10, 15.12, 15.14, to Title 15 of the Hawaiian Gardens Municipal Code, adopting by reference and amending the 2025 California Building Electrical, Mechanical, Plumbing, and Residential Codes.
May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Farfan?
Yes.
Councilmember Roa?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Del Rio?
Yes.
Mayor DePaula?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, Consent Calendar. Does any council member want to pull any agenda items from the consent calendar for separate discussion?
I'd like to pull item B2.
Item B2, recommendation to receive and file a report summarizing a meeting between city Hawaiian Garden staff and the Cerritos Sheriff's Station regarding the recently implemented drone program. Okay, first, I'd like to ask my council colleague to vote for all the items except item number two. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the remainder of the consent calendar in its entirety with the exception of B2.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Farfan?
Yes.
Councilmember Roa?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Del Rio?
Yes.
Mayor DePaula?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'd like to read Consent Calendar item number two. Recommendation to receive and file a report summarizing a meeting between city Hawaiian Garden staff and the Cerritos Sheriff's Station regarding the recently implemented drone program.
Mayor, members of City Council, Steve Gummens will be providing the update or the report. You may recall that the captain was here recently and he did provide some initial information regarding this program, but I wanted for our staff to report on it because it was one of the requests from council that we look into that.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Last month, I had the pleasure of meeting with Captain Strong and his team at the Cerritos Sheriff's Station to gain information on their recently established drone program. The program took approximately eight months to implement, and it has been in operation for approximately seven months. The initial step in adopting the program was for the captain to submit a written request to the chief of the Special Operations Division of the Sheriff's Department. The written request listed flight operation examples such as life-threatening situations and other high-risk tactical operations. The average drone costs approximately $10,000. The City of Cerritos purchased two drones and then donated them to the Sheriff's Department. While I was there, one of the captain's team members did come in and actually flew one of the drones in front of us, and it was pretty impressive. The Sheriff's Department needed to identify pilots from the Sheriff's Station and have these individuals trained. Training and certification can take approximately six months. Captain Strong stated that he has a good working relationship with the Lakewood Sheriff's Station and would be happy to assist if needed. I can answer any questions that you may have, staff requests that you receive and file this report.
Do you have any discussion or question?
So, Steve, thanks for setting up the meeting and gathering some additional information. You know, was there any conversation in regards to whether or not we might have the ability to duplicate a program like this, whether or not, how complex it would be, whether or not Lakewood Station is contemplating doing something, you know? Any details in that matter?
So, we did have some conversation of that council member. So, they have established the blueprint. It is there. The captain was very adamant that he has a good working relationship with the Lakewood Station so that he would be, you know, more than willing to assist in that process. I believe it's just a matter of this point of the city and the Lakewood Sheriff's Station sitting down and having this conversation with the captain if that's the direction that you and your colleagues would like to direct staff. Obviously, there's budgetary issues involved and also personnel issues. Because as I mentioned, Captain Strong at his station, they had to identify officers who were interested and willing to go through the training program to be pilots of these drones. So, there are various hurdles involved, but the initial steps here in the report is what we would need to duplicate if that's the direction that the city wants to proceed in.
Do you know how many officers were trained? Just curious.
I do not, no. We could find out, but I apologize, I don't have that data.
Is there any question?
I was going to ask the same thing. Is this like a program that we could eventually like tap into or amend as part of our contract or maybe work with some of the other cities like we do now, Lakewood and the City of Artesia? Maybe we can chair a pilot or depending on what the situation is. Maybe it's something that it's worth considering or evaluating.
We can definitely look into the program options and report back at a later date as well. Ideally, yeah, that would be probably the best way to introduce the program to our city is if we were able to partner with one of the neighboring cities. But we'll definitely look at that.
Do you need any type of, anything formal from us or just?
No, at this point, we're just gathering more data.
Okay.
That's what it is.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Consent Calendar item number two.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I second.
Councilmember Farfan?
Yes.
Councilmember Roa?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Del Rio?
Yes.
Mayor DePaula?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're moving up to the discussion item. We have two for tonight. First one, we have three tonight. First one, recommendation to adopt Resolution Number 033-2025, approving, authorizing, and directing execution of a joint directing execution of a joint exercise of powers agreement with the California Municipal Finance Authority. Is there a staff report?
Good evening, Mayor and city council. Tonight, I have Travis Cooper here from the California Municipal Finance Authority. He'll be coming forward to say a couple of words about the city's membership to the authority.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Travis Cooper. I'm with the California Municipal Finance Authority. The California Municipal Finance Authority, or CMFA, is a joint powers authority that was formed in 2004 to assist local governments, nonprofits, and businesses with the issuance of taxable and tax-exempt debt throughout California. To date, over 350 cities, counties, and special districts are members of the CMFA. The CMFA has been asked to award a grant to the developer of the Hawaiian Terrace Senior Apartments, who will convert a portion of the market rate units to affordable units. The Hawaiian Terrace Senior Apartments is 101-unit apartment complex for seniors 55 years and older, and at least 40% of the units will be restricted to 80% of AMI, which is area median income, with this grant. The city will have no financial or legal obligations or responsibilities with regard to the grant. This just helps make possible the project to achieve its affordability levels. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. And we do have a member of the property management team here with us as well.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to, may I have, I would like to entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Farfan?
Yes.
Councilmember Roa?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Del Rio?
Yes.
Mayor DePaola?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, recommendation to review and approve the amended guidelines for the CDC Youth and Adult Scholarship Program. Is there a staff report?
There is. Joe Jimenez will be presenting the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The City of Hawaiian Gardens has supported educational advancement through scholarship programs designed to assist both youth and adult residents. The scholarship program serves as an investment in our community's future by providing educational achievement, community service, and lifelong learning. Staff conducted a review of the existing scholarship program guidelines and identified opportunities to simplify requirements and expand eligibility for Hawaiian Gardens residents, particularly high school seniors preparing for college. Eligibility requirements will remain the same apart from the removal of the 20-hour community service requirement through the city and the one-day orientation. Students will be required to explain their involvement in community service through the essay component of the application, and options to volunteer with the city will still be provided. The city will offer up to nine youth scholarships, three adult scholarships. The award levels will be contingent on the approved budget of this program and may be modified on a year-to-year basis. The city will develop a committee comprised of local school personnel principals, designees to assist us with interviewing and evaluating the approved applicants. We will also work with Artesia High School to recognize the scholarship recipients at one of their existing school events. The city will also be representing the scholarship winners at one of our regularly scheduled city council meetings. The amended guidelines for the Youth and Adult Scholarship Program reflects the City's of Hawaiian Gardens' commitment to promoting educational advancement, supporting residents of all ages, and encouraging community service. That concludes my staff report. If you have a chance to any questions.
Is there any discussion?
I actually have a question. Is there a time limit as to when the participants have to use this scholarship? And the reason being is, well, not every student in our area will attend a Cal State or UC, and currently, community colleges pretty much offer free education for freshmen and sophomore students. So, I think it would be prudent to advertise that once you participate in this scholarship, if you do obtain it, the funds will be available for you for X amount of time if you don't need them right away. Because what would happen in the past is that the student had to pay for the classes and then get reimbursed through the city. So, it makes it difficult for them to actually be able to claim that money if they have a free tuition.
The current guidelines, they have two years in order for them to use their scholarship.
I have a question, Joe. So, the new guideline eligibility requirement says that we remove the 20-hour community service requirement, correct? And then the alternative way is for them to identify any of community service that they could do and also giving them the option. Can you identify the reason why that portion is eliminated or any challenges in terms of their involvement in our identified community service?
Yeah, we just, we want to simplify the process for the youths in high school because obviously they may be participating in extracurricular activities, things of that nature. Now, we are still going to promote to them opportunities to volunteer with the city, but we're just not going to make it a requirement because they still have to just explain their involvement with community service. We're trying to increase the applicant pool as well. This past year, we only received 10 youth scholarship applicants, so we're trying to increase that pool as well.
Right, so I can elaborate a little bit as well. So, in talking to our local high school counselors and the principal, one of the things that was brought up was that we required that they do 20 hours of community service here in one of our programs, when in fact, many of these youth students, they're doing community service as part of the criteria requirements when they apply for other scholarships. So, they're already doing community service, so adding the additional requirement of 20 hours here was, they thought, was a bit of an obstacle. So, our effort really with the amendments is to streamline the process like Joe mentioned and to ensure that, you know, the target age is the youth, the high school coming out of youth that are going to college, so.
Really quick, so, how about instead of taking it out, can they use the community service they do somewhere else?
Absolutely. So, that's what we intended to do when we do the rating. They're going to be rated on their essay, and in their essay, one of the questions is, you know, to tell us about any community service they're doing. So, that will be weighed in when the raiders review.
I mean, instead of like removing it totally from the application, if they're doing community service, have them have proof that they're doing community service elsewhere.
So, you're saying still make it a requirement?
But if they're doing community service somewhere else, then have it documented so we know what they're doing elsewhere.
We can amend it.
Instead of requiring them to do it.
That they do it here?
Yes.
That the requirement exists as long as they have proof.
They're doing elsewhere.
We can amend it to include that language.
I think you're still going to, I mean, I think it's a great idea, but I think you're still going to have some challenges even when they are doing volunteer hours with us. Sometimes it's difficult because their schedules are packed, especially since it's like their senior year. So, literally, we had participants that were coming in 6:00, you know, 7:00 PM, trying to get in two hours a day or trying to rush their hours.
Or maybe instead of 20, making it 10, and if they do it elsewhere, validating those 10 here.
How about a minimum of 10? Yeah, I think the volunteer just shows that they have a vested interest in the community, whether it's Hawaiian Gardens or another community, they're giving back. So, I think it's a critical element that they find a way to do it. And I guess the question could be, maybe it's something that we take into account, maybe their junior, senior year, you know? Because, yeah, I understand, senior year, there's a lot going on, and they have a full plate already, so maybe you take that into consideration, those last two years, you know?
We can do that. Yeah, another key item that I want to make sure the council's aware of is, in speaking to the local high school, we thought of an idea of, well, how do we make the best in terms of recognizing the students? So, what we're proposing with the current amendment is that we merge our event, our scholarship dinner event, with the Artesia High School Scholarship Event, which, coincidentally, for the past two years, we've been, well, you have been asked to participate financially in, and we felt it was a good opportunity to get, you know, our students recognized not only by the council, but by all the students and all the attention that takes place there at that event. We would, of course, also invite them here, you know, for you all to recognize them and still have the recognition at the site where we do the plaques as well.
For any students that do not attend Artesia, would they be able to participate at the Artesia event?
Yes.
So, another thought I have is whether or not we open up to another category, you know? And that's something that potentially we could look into, whether it's like a trade school or something in that manner, you know? Or maybe just something beyond, you know, the traditional three categories I believe that we have. But I mean, just so that you kind of open up this net in terms of applicants.
In terms of a scholarship, I mean, I know that we have nine, but I think sometimes there's a bigger challenge in actually being exposed to the schools than actually like attending. I know for like a lot of the residents in this community, I would say that the very few actually have the opportunity to maybe travel with their parents to like Sacramento out of state to visit the schools that they have applied to or that they have an interest. So, maybe that's something that we can, you know, set X amount of money for, if you get chosen for this scholarship, to take a road trip to visit the university of your choice or, because that's an expense that maybe is more difficult to actually, you know, do as a low-income family.
Yeah, I think we can probably come up with some type of program that would allow for that, for the winners, obviously, or awardees. Yeah, we can incorporate it if that's the council's desire.
So, my question is, in terms of outreach, you know, because we wanted to make sure that the message is being, you know, shared to potential students who would be willing to apply, what are the steps that we do? It was mentioned that we work with the school counselor, right?
Yes, that's correct. We'll be working with the school counselors and also the principals at each of the schools. We'll be notified via email, letter, and we're also going to make an effort to make presentations at their college centers.
Great. And I think it also needs to be reiterated that the minimum GPA required is 2.5, so it's not that threatening to some students that are feeling like, oh, scholarship, it's only for the most intelligent. You know, I think the program is very unique because we're giving a second chance to those individuals who are in the average, you know? So, I think also making sure that when you reach out to those students, it does also be emphasized that 2.5 overall GPA is attainable. Thank you.
So, the three scholarship categories are civic, academic, and athletics, and then the policy does allow for them to attend a trade school as well.
And I like the idea that we identified nine students, I mean, nine young people and three adults, because I think in the past, there's a certain imbalance because we have almost the same number. I think if we're setting that goal, then I know staff would work on that because we have an identified number. With that said, may I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Councilmember Farfan?
Yes.
Councilmember Roa?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Del Rio?
Yes.
Mayor DePaola?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item, recommendation to accept the construction improvements by Sequel Contractors for the fiscal year 2023-2024 arterial and residential street rehabilitation project 112, and authorize the city clerk to file the notice of completion. Is there a staff report?
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council members, and dear residents. This item is related to the recent street rehabilitation project that completed in October 2025. I'm going to provide a brief background about the project and the expenditure report. On June 13, 2023, the city council approved two segments, including Norwalk Boulevard from Carson Street to Centralia Street and 223rd Street from Belshar Avenue to Wartam Avenue for the fiscal year 2023-24 arterial and residential street rehabilitation project 112. The project's scope of work included cold milling existing asphalt concrete, overlaying the full street width with asphalt rubber hot mix, crack sealing, removing and replacing damaged curbs and gutters, sidewalks and driveway approaches, installing new ADA-compliant curb ramps, refreshing and replacing traffic striping and markings, and replacing vehicle detector loops, and illuminated the street name signs. On February 19, 2025, the city clerk received eight seal beads for the project. The lowest responsive bidder was Sequel Contractors of Santa Fe Springs, California, with a bid amount of $1,248,182. On March 12, 2025, the city council awarded the construction contract to the lowest responsive bidder, Sequel Contractors. A 10% construction contingency was set aside for a total construction budget of $1,373,182. The contractors was authorized to proceed with the construction in mid-April 2025, and the project was completed in October 2025. Three change orders were issued in this project to accommodate the wrapping of 31 utility boxes located along Norwalk Boulevard and Carson Street, in addition to implementing further concrete improvement at the city hall parking lot. Staff collaborated with City of Lakewood Public Works Department for the improvement at intersection of Norwalk Boulevard and Centralia Street, a shared intersection between the cities of Hawaiian Gardens and Lakewood. As part of this partnership, both cities entered into a memorandum of agreement outlining the scope of improvements. The City of Hawaiian Gardens will receive a $33,200 contribution from City of Lakewood to cover the shared intersection improvement cost. The project was completed on a schedule and within budget with a final construction cost of $1,351,990.13. This concludes my staff report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Is there any discussion from a council colleague? Seeing none, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Farfan?
Yes.
Councilmember Roa?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Del Rio?
Yes.
Mayor DePaola?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item, new business. Is there any new business? Seeing none, oral staff report?
We do have several staff reports. Joe?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just a few updates regarding our recreation department. November 22nd, we'll be hosting a turkey giveaway drive. We received some funding from the Office of Supervisor Janice Hahn and the Golden State Water to help purchase some turkeys, and we'll be partnering with the schools as we did last year to identify some families in need, and we'll schedule a time for pickup of these turkeys. That is Saturday, November 22nd. On December 5th is our annual tree lighting event. We will also be having our Santa parade. Festivities are set to begin at 4:30 PM. The next day, December 6th, is our Breakfast with Santa event. December 7th, we'll be taking kids from our youth volleyball program to the SMATH volleyball tournament. That'll be the first time participating in volleyball in quite some time. And on December 13th and 14th- And on December thirteenth and fourteenth, we'll be actually hosting the SMAT flag football tournament for the B Division. And we are having our flag football youth division team participating in this tournament as well.
Joe, what, what age is that?
That is ten to twelve-year-olds. In addition to our, our team programming, our ATGM program is wrapping up their flag football season. They are set to begin their rugby season starting in December through March. And then from March through May, they offer an elite league that includes weightlifting, basketball, and wrestling. And just please keep in mind that the Fede Middle School also offers middle school sports. They offer everything from flag football, volleyball, and basketball. So we're trying to just, you know, work around and work with each other when we're offering different programs for our teams. And last but not least, we have begun renovations of our facility at the C. Robert Lee Activities Center. We're beginning with the racquetball courts. Racquetball courts are set to be closed from basically today through mid-December. We're replacing the lights, painting of the racquetball courts, and resurfacing of the floors. And soon after that, we'll begin the work on the basketball courts, which the basketball courts will be closed basically essentially the same time, November seventeenth through the beginning, the first week of January. We'll be doing the same work. We're replacing some of the lighting, painting of the whole entire gymnasium, and resurfacing and restriping the basketball gym floor. In addition, we'll be also working in between the back, the boxing gym and the YAL room, making those upgrades as well. That concludes my report.
I also wanted to provide some updates to our residents due to upcoming rain and the forecast that we have for the rain in the next few days. In regards to our street sweeping schedule, we're gonna continue with street sweeping for tomorrow because the rain is going to start in, in the evening. So we're not going to have any impact to our street sweeping schedule or ticketing process by our public safety department. Sandbags will be provided for our residents at the C. Robert Lee South Parking Lot, located at two-one-eight-one-five Pioneer Boulevard for our residents. The block cleanup event scheduled for Saturday, November fifteen, has been canceled due to rain forecast. Ongoing public works project, including the street rehabilitation on Juan Avenue between Carson Street and two-fourteenth Street, and the sanitation district sewer line relining project on two-fourteenth Street between Elaine Avenue and Belshire Avenue will be placed on hold due to the forecasted rain and is expected to resume after the rain subsides next week. I also wanted to share with city council and also our residents, I'm pleased to share that our Carson Street Beautification Project Phase Two has been selected as one of the American Public Works Association, APWA, Southern California Chapter, Best Award Winners in Traffic Mobility and Beautification Category. This is a remarkable and historic milestone for myself and the City of Hawaiian Gardens since it's the first time happening. And this project was selected out of more than seventy-five agencies and nearly two hundred project submissions. Our project stood up, and I just want to appreciate our Public Works Maintenance Division and engineering staff to help us build this project. And also, we are blessed with your leadership and city manager's management of this project. So I just wanted to share this good news with you and appreciate all the work. Thank you.
Very quickly, Nima, who do we have using the, following the street sweeper for citations?
Public Safety Department is managing that.
We've had two. Almost.
Good evening. I wanted to invite you all to the ribbon cutting tomorrow morning at nine-thirty for Sushi Forest located at the Hawaiian Gardens Town Center. They have a new owner, so we'd like to welcome them to the City of Hawaiian Gardens and wish them well as they start their new business. I hope you'll be able to attend. Thank you.
Just a quick update. The FEES study has been now presented to staff. We're going over those, and we'll be bringing that back to council at a meeting in the near future to allow you to look at those. We'll have a workshop prior to the meeting so that you'll have a chance to really ask a lot of questions about that. We're also working on the ERP system. We're in the process of the needs assessment finalization. We'll be presenting that to the consultants, and they will then help us put out the RFP for the software to be selected.
I have an important announcement. We, we, the city, have partnered with Elli Food Bank and Supervisor Janice Hahn's office to host a food drive on November twenty-sixth. It's gonna take place at Fede Middle School, the rear parking lot, we're hoping. And we're gonna be working on details here this coming week. And we'll be able, we'll be able to provide additional information at that point. Just for your information.
Next item, city attorney report?
I think for me, Mayor.
Oral council report? Next item, closed session. There's no closed session for tonight. There being no further business, I hereby join this meeting at seven sixteen PM to the next council meeting to be held on Wednesday, December tenth, twenty twenty-five, at six PM. Happy Thanksgiving to all, and may God bless you.